Oh, just stop rubbing it in, okay? Just stop. Enough already, burn.
Okay, we're ready.
I'd like to call to order the reorganization meeting of the Milton School Committee, April 28th, 2010. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As called for in our school committee policy BDA, I will serve as Chairman Pro Tem for the nominations of our officers. And Ms. Gormly, if you would be Secretary for the roll call votes. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the Office of Chairman of the Milton School Committee. Do I hear any? Ms. Bev Jones?
I would like to nominate Lynda Lee Sheridan.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any statements that you'd like to make?
Well, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. It's really been my privilege to serve with you as your Chair this past year. I honestly feel blessed to work with such, side by side with such an outstanding administrative team as Mary Gormly and John Phelan and Matt Gillis. And they just work tirelessly every day on behalf of all of the families of the town of Milton. And I look forward to continuing working with each and every one of you here on this school committee, a dedicated and talented group as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, like a motion to close nominations for Chairman of the Milton School Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Roll call vote, please. Member Kelly?
Yes.
Bev Jones?
Yes.
Chris Uvan, yes. Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Nominations are closed. Congratulations, Ms. Sheridan.
Thank you.[134.11][134.11][laughter]
So, at this time, I will accept nominations for the position of Vice Chair of the Milton School Committee. Yes, Mr. Hubian?
I'd like to nominate Glenn Pavlicek.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. Mr. Pavlicek, do you accept this nomination?
Yes, I do.
Great. So, we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bev Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan, yes. Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
Mr. Hubian?
Yes.
Well, congratulations. Thank you very much.[177.73][177.73][laughter]
Good luck, Glenn.
Anything you'd like to say?
No.[181.73][181.73][laughter] I'm talking enough lately.
Yes. Before moving into the regular meeting, which will not start, we will go into recess in a few minutes, that meeting will start at 7:00. But I really wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Margaret Abahart and Marie Regan for really running a wonderful campaign for the school committee. I thought it was very exciting to have four people running for these two positions. And I think it speaks well to Milton as a community and the dedication to making our schools the best that they possibly can. So, thank you for running, for doing that. And congratulations to Glenn. And I do have a note from Dennis Cohane that I want to share with people. He said, "I apologize for not being able to attend tonight's meeting, as I am a contestant in the third round of the Toastmasters International Speaking Contest, which is being held tonight at 7:00 PM in the Milton Public Library. Today's date was predetermined months ago. I recently won the first two rounds and will hope to win tonight to cap off what will be a very successful week indeed." And for those of you who don't know, Toastmasters is a nonprofit international organization with about 250,000 members in 106 different countries that is devoted to developing public speaking and leadership skills. So Dennis finalized by saying, "I look forward to attending my first meeting on Monday before town meeting and fulfilling my duties as the newest school committee member." So, I wanted to share that with you. And so, at this time, we will recess until 7:00 because we are not posted for our regular school committee meeting until 7:00 PM. Okay?
Does that require a motion?
Does it require a motion?
To recess? I don't believe so. I think it's consensus.
Consensus is fine.
All in favor?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening. We are now back in session for the April 28th, 2010 Milton School Committee meeting. At this time, could we just approve tonight's agenda? Are there any additions or corrections to this agenda? Mr. Hubian?
Under number seven, Consolidated Facilities, remove the letter A and all things behind it. It'll just be a, an update.
Okay. Discussion about that. Great. Thanks.
Right.
And also, in the agenda that's handed out tonight, letter C under Executive Session didn't appear. It's contract negotiation, so we will add that to this agenda. Anything else? Okay, thank you. We have no one for citizen speak. We'll move to Ms. Gormly's superintendent report.
A brief update. Today, we had our first session for the Cunningham Principal Search Committee. You were well represented by Mr. Pavlicek. Briefly, we, again, for the public, Mr. Phelan and I, Mashi Yaretzky's representing the principals.
Excuse me, Ms. Gormly. Do you have your microphone on? I just don't see it. Okay, sorry. She's got it. Thank you.
Today, we had our first meeting for the, of the Search Committee for the Cunningham Principalship. You were represented by Mr. Pavlicek. John Phelan and I serve on the committee. Mashi Yaretzky, Principal of the Tucker, represented the principals. Ms. Beach and Ms. Concanon represented Unit B, the administrators. Then we go for the public to know, to the Teachers Union. We had several teachers who volunteered. The Teachers Union sent forward Natalie Lang, Amanda LaFort, and Allison Joyce. And they went to the PTO, and we had a phenomenal response. And the PTO sent forward Jeannie Conley, Stephen Finnegan, Drew Flanagan, and Patty Hoff. We went over all of our school committee procedures, all of your policies on non-discrimination, your diversity policy, the procedure, the code of confidentiality. And we brainstormed what the group was looking for, representing their groups in the new Cunningham Principal. We brainstormed questions that will be asked of each of the candidates. And then we gave the committee members their homework, 23 applications. We have a meeting next week where we will decide which candidates we want to interview, firm up our questions. And then this group is set up two sessions, from 4:00 in the afternoon to 9:00 or 10:00 at night, to do the interviewing. So, I applaud these individuals. I thank them. I think we have an outstanding screening committee. And for those individuals who have sat in the committee, the process works. And I shared with the committee that we have individuals who are applying for administrative positions, and I'm very interested in the processes and the proceeds used in those districts. And this is a very, very perfected, over the last two administrations, process that is real ownership. And as I said to them, they're going to feel good about the process, good about their participation and their time. So, I want to thank those individuals, and we'll give you an update after the next round of interviews. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Gormly. For my report, I just have two things. For people watching at home, tonight, there's an information night at the Senior Center about consolidated facilities. So, if you are interested in getting informed on, or getting an updated presentation about consolidated facilities, the proposal that will be discussed at town meeting, you can scurry out right now to the Senior Center and be a part of that group. Also, just for school committee members, I'll ask Bev tomorrow to circulate the list of the committees so that people can sign up, whether or not you want to stay on a current committee or move to a different committee. And that's all I have. So, Mrs. Kelly, we'll move into the Finance Subcommittee Report, please.
And hopefully, I can speak without starting a coughing fit. Excuse me, I apologize. As you know, the Warren Committee, in their constant review of resources available for appropriation at next year's, for next year's budget, identified $416,000 that they would like to recommend be appropriated to the school budget, which we, of course, will take very willingly. And the administration has recommended reviewing the cut list that we have that had 24.4 positions on it, restoring 7.2 positions. And they're delineated, and I have this feeling that I'm going to lose my voice. So, would you mind, Glenn, I'm just, and just describing where they're going to put back?
Okay, on the sheets you have in front of you, Matt has passed out, they are in the green and yellow of what you're looking at. The 7.2 positions were, one was a family and consumer science teacher at the high school. The high school principal is indicating that he, rather than restoring this exact position, he feels he may need more flexibility in terms of another elective position at the high school. So, while we intend to put the position back, it may not, in fact, stay as a family and consumer science teacher. It may be a different elective teacher. There are currently three family and consumer science teachers, and this would drop it to two, but the position would be reallocated based on need for elective positions within the school.
But it will be a teacher.
But it will be a teacher, yes.
High school teacher.
High school teacher, elective class is the intention, I believe. At the Pierce, we had one classroom corps teacher in the 7th, 8th grade, social studies, which was going to disrupt the team structure. And that position is going to be restored, so that will not appear on the cut list as well. We had, in the elementary schools, a series of elementary ed specialist positions, art, music, and so forth, which was a full-time, a .6 FTE with some cuts in those areas. So, that cut will not be made. The World Language Committee, we were holding as a placeholder, the potential of cutting two positions through the efforts of the World Language Committee. We didn't, the World Language Committee's report, as you recall, did not indicate where we could find two positions, and in fact indicated we could not find two positions by reorganizations that they were looking at. So, those positions won't be able to be cut, and so it's sort of a paper restoration. There are some minor reallocation in there, so we'll come back to that in a moment. A language-based teacher was going to be cut. This was, we believe, due to people moving from the elementary school up to the Pierce and a reallocation of the position. It's appearing that we will likely need that position at the Pierce. And so, it will be restored as well. And the ACE teacher, which was a .1 FTE for the Art enrichment program, was on the cut list, and that is off as well. We had one full-day kindergarten teacher and a half of a preschool teacher that we were planning to cut based on decreased enrollment. Those were cuts we thought we could make. We're not restoring them immediately. We still are waiting for the final numbers on those enrollments. We may be able to cut those positions, still based on decreased enrollment, and reallocate the money elsewhere, but for the time being, we don't know that. So, we're going to, they're in sort of a gray area here between being cut and being restored, and we'll wait to see as those numbers pan out. So, if they are needed, they'll be restored. If they are not needed for classroom size, that will be restored elsewhere.
Glenn, before you go on, when we think we'll know about that restoration, is it the end of April?
If I might, I should have added this to the superintendent's report, that I would urge anyone viewing, that the deadline for signing up for kindergarten is this Friday, Mr. Phelan?
This Friday.
And the deadline for signing up for first grade choice English and FLESS, or French immersion, is this Friday. If anyone is have, does not have the proper forms or needs any information, as Mr. Gillis just said, entire packets have to be submitted by Friday. And we're going to work hard. We've committed to the public to move into assigning schools. We're going to hold back on teacher assignments until the end of the summer for all of the elementary staff. And so, we'll really be able to, at our next school committee meeting, hopefully give you updates at every single meeting on the kindergarten enrollment, the first grade enrollment, and the preschool enrollment.
Thank you.
And I think that was our list. The ELE English teacher, the .6, that was a reduction from .8 to .2. Perhaps Superintendent could explain that a little bit better.
Two issues. One, at our next meeting, we'll, we're meeting with groups of parents. So, on the World Language cuts, or any reorganizations, or curriculum, the integration that we're working on, we'll report out at the next meeting to you. We're still meeting with the principals tomorrow to firm up those ideas. The full-day K and the preschool was really based on anticipated enrollment. That's how we thought we could make those cuts. And we're looking at those numbers, and we'll report out. In ELE, we, again, based on the number of students we have, who's aging out, who they currently anticipate will be moved out of the program based on testing, that's how we anticipated making that cut. So, really, to Mr. Pavlicek's point, the ELE, the preschool, and the full-day K are based on enrollment and subscription to the program.
And within the World Language as well, I mentioned there was a little twisting around there. Part of those, the two positions that were to be cut at World Language, one of them is a position, we, there was no second position to cut, so that's a paper restoration. The other is going to be a partial reallocation, because some of it is going to be able to put back some of the FLESS. .2 is going to be used for increasing the FLESS back at first grade. And the other, .8, is a little bit yet to be determined exactly how that's going to be spread around for other restorations, partially for specialized, some for enrollment. But it's, that's the piece of it that's to be determined.
We'll report out at the next meeting, a clear articulation.
But basically, those are the 7.2 positions. Those were roughly the 7.2 teaching positions that we had on the list before, with modulo a little bit of a perturbation in the World Language one, and the possibility that the pre-K and K might be reorganized as well, depending on enrollment.
And if Mr. Pavlicek might, and Mrs. Kelly, still articulate the 17 positions that are being cut?
Yeah.
We can still run through them again. At the high school, we're looking at the, we're still looking at the elimination of the Director of Guidance. At Pierce, we are still looking at the elimination of one of the assistant principal positions. And at the elementary schools, we're still looking at the elimination of the only half-time assistant principal position in the elementary schools. We're also looking at the aid allocation, reducing full-time aides to aides at the, just the time in kindergarten where they're covering classroom activities as opposed to lunch, et cetera, activities. And that's still being investigated as to exactly how that can be done. We're, that's a piece that's still on the Finance Committee's agenda, we're trying to get our arms around a little more closely. We are looking still at a .5 data system specialist. We're still looking at eliminating five classroom aides. This is special ed classroom aides through rewriting IDPs and just allocating them more carefully. We're still looking at cutting $55,000 from professional development, reducing the registrar from full to half-time. We're still looking at an electricity savings of about $75,000. And we're still looking at a custodial position. So, those are the positions that are still out there. Still, it's a, still quite a long list of positions to be cut.
Mrs. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Pavlicek. So, the $416,000 would be added into the instruction salary line of our budget. Is that correct? And so, the total then would be of our budget, $33,392,036. So, the Finance Subcommittee recommends that we approve this move, and so I would move to approve the FY 11 general fund budget of $33,392,036.
Second?
Yes.
We can have discussion.
Discussion, yes.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. So, and thank you for all the hard work that the Finance Subcommittee does. I know this is a ton of work. So, to be clear, because this came up with many parents, so it looks like in terms of high school, middle school, and elementary, there's one cut on high school, other than the system-wide. There's, Ms. Gormly, am I right on this? There's one cut at high school?
Yes.
There's one cut at Pierce? And there's a point?
An administration cut.
Right. And there's a .5 at elementary. Am I reading this right? In addition to the aides and the other positions, but in terms of, so, because that has come up where, I just want to be clear about that. Okay.
And to your point, when it's come up, it's important to see that we're stressing there are eliminations and cuts at every level. Administrators, the Warren Committee was very strong about putting the teachers back with this money. Custodians, support staff, aides. So, you're right. An administrator at the high school, an administrator at the middle, and a half-time administrator at the elementary.
Can I ask another question? So, and I know, I'm not doubting, we don't have a choice about this, but I'm very concerned about the cut of the Director of Guidance on the high school level. The Guidance Councilors currently do the college prep, and they're also responsible for the 504s, correct? At the high school level?
Yes.
Is that true at Pierce as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're cutting the Director of Guidance, and I know we have no choice, but I guess I just want it on the record that that's very difficult to accept. I think it's really going to impact high school kids with their college stuff, and I'm very worried about the 504s management for the Guidance folks.
And?
Not asking for a solution, I'm just saying I'm very, very concerned about that.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms. Hubian.
I just wanted to second Kristen's concern about that, that's, you know, as we're heading into college season.
Right.
I see how hard those people are working in that office. And to eliminate the director and reallocate those responsibilities, I'm just worried that someone might get lost in the shuffle. We want to make sure that all our students succeed.
So, maybe we should articulate exactly what it is that the responsibilities are. So, the, currently, we have four Guidance Councilors at the high school and the director. And each of the four share in the caseload of all of the students in the high school, which are about 1,100 something, say 1,200 students.
Less than 1,100.
Less than 1,100, okay. And what they do is, so they have students from every year. It's not just all seniors or all juniors, because that would be too much work in one year. So, they have students from each class, and then the Director of Guidance also has a small caseload in addition to working with the students, overseeing all of the application process, doing all of the nighttime trainings for parents, outreach informational nights for parents. So, it is a huge loss, absolutely. And then what about the 504s? In terms of who's going to be in charge of that piece? I can't answer that, Ms. Gormly.
Sure. The, each individual Guidance Counselor is responsible for the 504s of the students that they have on their caseload. So, similar to how Pierce operates.
Could you just elaborate on the 504?
Sure.
They're thrown that around, they don't know.
Yeah. A 504 is a, an accommodation plan for students who may have some sort of disability that would not be supported with an educational plan, an IEP through the Special Education Department, but through a 504, which is a document that recognizes that there's some sort of disability that needs to be accommodated for them to have access to the regular curriculum, and equal access to all functions of the high school. Through the work with the DOE, Guidance Councilors are the usual person to implement those 504s. They have always been doing so. Ken works as the coordinator of the 504s, but the actual, the actual people who supervise, implement, write, and follow through with the 504 accommodation plans for each of their students are their Guidance Councilors. So, the reduction of the Guidance Director would mean that that's an overseeing position that he provides, that we would then have to incorporate.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's important to say that we've reorganized our Unit B department over the last year or so, and several Unit B positions have been either combined, i.e., our art department is combined with our music department now for fine arts. Our business department got combined with our math and technology departments, which used to be three positions and are now one. So, we have been trying to consolidate the functions, and many people have been picking up additional supervising roles and/or duties due to budget and due to trying to be more efficient with our resources. And so, this unfortunately is a big step in that direction, but it is a big step.
So, but then who's in charge of the overseeing of the 504s?
I believe Superintendent Gormly and Dr. Drahter will review all different supervision aspects of that position and assign them to the different administrators at the high school, and probably central office as well.
And to the point, if I might, I've used Mr. Hubian as an example, that with every one of these positions, the registrar sees new families, all the kindergarten families every single day. And when I've spoken with the school committee at PTOs, I said, "There's no one not working all day, every day in the Milton Public Schools." So, to Mr. Hubian's point, he said, "When the registrar is going to be reduced to .5, you're going to have to publish that the hours are only open, you know, three hours in the morning, reducing that position half-time." So, it is going to take, these are very valuable positions. We try to divide the cuts and reductions one more time. I want to outline to every level, these people are all valuable, dedicated to the Milton Public Schools, and these positions are going to have to be assumed by people who already have, full-time, and are giving 150%.
Mm-hmm. And we could outline in that kind of detail for every one of these other cuts, you know?
Absolutely.
The impact of the assistant principal at Pierce is huge. So, there are many. Mr. Pavlicek, you were going to say something before, I think? No?
One point I was going to make, in talking about this, one minor mitigating factor to this is with more college applications becoming online, there was a hope that some of, some of that paperwork could be assumed, would go away in terms of an online. But it's still, I mean, the Director of Guidance is still the principal liaison with the parents, and those meetings are valuable. And if you don't have that position, that is still a very significant loss.
And if I can just follow up on that? And again, I know we have no choice, but I look at the 504s, and I just think how important it is, because often we can help kids, in a more minor way, not get into a more special education-oriented thing. So, that's my concern, too, is we have these vulnerable kids that maybe with a little bit of accommodations, don't need to make the big jump. So, that's my other concern. But I understand we have no choice, but it's not an easy one. As for the other positions, the same thing. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, the other item we just wanted to put on the table was the town meeting presentation, and what the committee would like to see in terms of, number one, should we do a presentation? And then, number two, any thoughts on what that should be?
Has the Finance Subcommittee made a decision? I mean, the proposal, the proposal, the presentation that we've been making at the PTOs is quite concise and to the point, and there has been some discussion about just using that.
Mm-hmm.
Do people feel that maybe we should make it smaller than that, or shorter than that?
No. I think that's fine, though.
Okay. So, we don't need a motion, I mean, we don't need a vote on that, but, so that would be a recommendation, Ms. Gormly?
Yes. And, if I might?
Yes.
The presentation that's in the budget book, in the library and online, is a lengthy presentation with data and backup material and MCAS material. And so, when we make this presentation, we can, to Ms. Kelly, had an excellent suggestion, indicate to the public how they can access all that information online.
Mm-hmm.
But having done these presentations, and even watching some of these public meetings in the last few weeks that have been going on, I think it would be very interesting for the public to understand one more time the stimulus money, and how we're using the stimulus money, and how we were frugal with the stimulus money, and, again, the cliff that it's creating, but how we're trying to be as responsible as we can this coming year.
Good.
Great.
Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. The consolidated facilities, Mr. Hubin?
As you mentioned earlier, there's a public hearing tonight, which started a half hour ago at the Council on Aging for the Consolidated Facilities. I'm sure it's being very well attended. The, we do have two articles, I misspoke at our last meeting, saying that we have three, but there are two. The first, Article 28, basically is an article that town meeting has to approve by two-thirds, allowing the school committee and the town selectmen to combine the maintenance and grounds facilities of the departments that are gonna be part of this agreement. So, that is the very first article, and it would be great if we could get a recommendation from this committee for town meeting on that article. The second article, Article 29, is, appropriates $138,402 for the purpose of funding salary and general expenses. And I'd like to hold off on discussing that particular article until we speak with the new board of selectmen after their reorg, to find out how they feel about where we are with the memorandum of agreement and what their feeling is on appropriating that money at this time. But I think it's the consensus of this board that we move forward with this, to see if this is something that we can obtain through an agreement. And I'd be looking to, well, I'll make it now, motion to recommend the approval of Article 28 to town meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We've discussed this several times before.
Yeah, I think we're recommending approval of the warrant committee's recommendation on our-
That's correct. Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you.
Right. And as I said, Article 29, we will be meeting prior to town meeting, and we can discuss that further after we get more input from the board of selectmen. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any old business or agenda items for our next meeting? We will be, we are posted before town meeting each night, but our next regular meeting is at May 18, I think, I believe. Any agenda items for that date?
Probably health and safety.
Okay.
Health and wellness, whatever it's called these days, that one.
Sure. Thanks, Kristin. I would like to mention just one more time in public session, aside from our reorg, that we're thrilled that Glenn Pavlicek and Dennis Cane won the seats this, for school committee for the next three years. I congratulated Margaret and Murray on a great race, and how exciting it was to have four people. I do also want to just say again that Dennis sent his regrets for not being able to be here tonight, that he is participating in a Toastmasters International Speaking Contest at this exact moment at the Milton Public Library. He's in the third round of the process, and the date was predetermined months ago, so he wasn't able to join us tonight, felt very badly about it, but looks forward to becoming an active member of this board, so. Anything else? Well, I will accept a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of security and contract negotiations, not to return to public session, but to adjourn from executive session.
So, moved.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Beverly Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Schardin? Yes? Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
Mr. Hubin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Good night.
Thanks, Carol.